I'd like to welcome everybody to the May Abington School Committee meeting here in the middle high school library at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 28th. I would ask everybody to please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get started, we always, the first meeting after the election is our reorg meeting, so we're gonna do that in a minute, but before we get to that, I just wanted to, as you know, Julie Groom's last meeting was in April. She did not run for reelection. Pam Neely is a new school committee member seated to my right, so I'd like to welcome Pam as part of the group for the next three years, for her anyway. So, thank you very much Pam, look forward to having you as part of the team.
Thank you.
So now we get into the reorganization, so I will be looking for a motion to authorize the secretary, Heidi Hernandez, to act as temporary chair for the purpose of opening nominations and completing the election for the position of school committee chairperson. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I will be looking for a nomination for the chair of school committee.
I nominate Chris. I second that nomination.
Okay, are there any other nominations to be heard? Alright, I'm gonna officially close nominations for chair. We by roll call vote, each member will announce who their nominee of choice. So, Chris?
Chris.
Danielle?
Chris.
I am going to vote for Chris, Melanie?
Chris.
And Pam?
I'll go with Chris.
Congratulations on your first official vote with the school committee. Our new chair is, well, our resuming chair is Chris Coyle, and I am now going to officially and happily handle the process. Back to Mr. Coyle, thank you.
Thank you. Told you it was awkward, right? We weren't allowed.
So awkward!
So I'll be looking for nominations for vice chair of the school committee. After all nominations are given, I will close nominations for vice chair. So I've been looking for any nomination for vice chair of the school committee.
I'll go ahead and nominate Danielle.
I'll second.
Okay, are there any other nominations for vice chair of school committee? Alright. So by roll call vote, I'll vote Danielle. Danielle?
Danielle.
Heidi?
Danielle.
Melanie?
Danielle.
And Pam?
Danielle.
Alright, so I think this is last but not least, right? Yep, so last but not least, I'll ask for nominations for secretary of the school committee, and I will nominate Heidi. Beat all you to it.
I'll second the nomination.
Alright, so any other nominations for secretary? Okay, I'll vote for Heidi.
Heidi.
Heidi?
Oh, hi, yes. I'm just taking notes, yes. Heidi.
Melanie?
Heidi.
And Pam?
Heidi.
Alright, thank you all very much, so thank you all for enduring that. So I know it's awkward, but I appreciate everybody doing their best to get through it. There is, so somewhere in the packet there maybe, I'm not even sure, because I can't remember, I didn't look through every single page of the back of it, but if not, so the superintendent and I, earlier in the month, about a month or two ago, looked at the subcommittees and kind of reduced them down some, because it felt like a lot of them were actually liaison type things. So I may look at it again and tweak it some, I know there were some that, like the safety committee and things like for liaison there. But for right now, the five subcommittees are what we have, and we have the amount of people that are normally there, it can be up to two, it can be one or two, it can't be more than two. If whatever you're interested in, let me know, email, text, whatever, if you see me, and I'll come up with a new grouping going forward for the rest, for next school year. I'm gonna ask you until your last day to follow the ones that are currently there right now. If there's anything for Julie you need, just let me know, okay? Great, thank you. Alright, so that was what we have. Before I go into the hearing of visitors, James, I'm gonna go to you for the presentation of the CPAC award, okay? Sorry guys, I'm going on a board for a minute.
That's cool. Thank you, everyone. I'm here to introduce tonight the Excellence in Special Education Award that is awarded by our district's CPAC, which is the Special Ed Parents Advisory Committee. So during two weeks, during the month of May, we open registration for parents and staff members and community members to nominate special educators who go above and beyond in their service to our district's most vulnerable students. So we've been doing this for three school years. We nominate a professional teacher level staff, a paraprofessional level staff, and tonight we'll also be honoring, we'll be making a special mention as well. So to announce our award winner for professional level staff will be Vicky Graham, our CPAC chairperson. To announce our winner for the paraprofessional level staff will be Amy Arkey, a parent within our district, and to announce our special mention will be April Palmquist, who's our vice chairperson CPAC. So thank you so much.
Alright, thanks, James.
Yep, and I'll hand it over to Vicky.
So our first award for Excellence in Special Education goes to Mrs. Catherine Spaziani. Ms. Spaziani has been serving our most vulnerable students since 2005. Her dedication and patience has guided many little hands onto the next step with confidence. She's also been a valuable teacher and mentor to others like me at the Abington Early Education Program. Catherine has never shied away from my fun projects and is always willing to help me tweak things so they work for her students. Her guidance has been immensely helpful. She has been an incredible asset to the Abington Public Schools, and as she was retiring this year, she will be sorely missed. Thank you, Catherine.
Vicky, do you mind if I just mention something really quick? Amy, I'm sorry, do you mind if I just take a second before you go up? So Catherine, did you want to talk at all?
I just wanna say thank you, and I have so enjoyed this job. It's been the best job ever, and I just love to see when the kids come in at such a young age, and then when they leave, they're just, they've made so much progress, and it just means so much to me, and I just, I love it. It's a great job, and thank you, everybody. Thank you CPAC, thank you Peter, thank you school committee, thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go off script for a minute. So without Catherine Spaziani, my son would not be nearly the person he is today. He came in at two and a half years old into center school with autism, our first experience with the district, and we weren't sure what was gonna happen, what was gonna go on. The work that Ms. Spaziani did for about three years, I think it ended up being, well, he was there because of his birthday, the way it factored in, he was in pre-K for three years with her. To this day, my wife and I acknowledge that she is the absolute angel of this district in our minds, so you were gonna be sorely missed. I truly didn't know you had won this award until I walked in tonight. So I just wanna say thank you from the school committee, but from my family as well. Thank you for everything that you've done for us. So, I'm sorry I had to go off script there for a minute, bud, thank you. Amy, go ahead if you want. Good bud. Go ahead, you're, actually you don't even need it, do you? Amy, 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 Amy.
Alright, this year's Excellence in Special Education Award is presented to Brendan Ramelard. For Abington Special Education, from Abington Special Education Parents Advisory Council recognizes Brendan Ramelard, Mr. B, for exemplary advocacy, support, and partnership with students with disabilities and their families.
He is one to one, paraprofessional, and boy, am I lucky that he was chosen just for me. He takes great pride in his job, and year after he has proven to be an incredible asset to BEES. I am so thankful that I have known Mr. B for three years now, and this has certainly helped me reach level of independence that I wasn't sure if I ever see. Mr. B thinks outside the box to find ways to encourage and motivate me. We have developed a wonderful friendship that I treasure. Even on the tougher days, Mr. B finds a way to turn the day around with his patience, kindness, and education. It is very clear that helping children is Mr. B's calling, and he deserves recognition, recognition, recognition for his positive attitude, compassion, and dedication. Thank you, Mr. B, for everything you have done for me and my family these three, these past three years. You are one of a kind and have made immense difference in my life. I hope you will come with me to Woodsville next year.
I guess I'll just say, thank you so much. Absolutely, I've gotten the opportunity to work with Xavier for the last three years, since kindergarten into second grade. We're sending him off to third grade next year, apparently without me. And it's just been such a great time. He's, it's been great to like go to work in the morning, which is not, you don't hear that from any jobs, and it's, I've been, it's been a pleasure working for the Abington District, and I'm excited to continue my work. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Xavier, great job. Xavier, great job, buddy. Great job. You're welcome.
Not sure how I follow that performance, but I'll try. So this year, the CPAC received 34 nominations, and a few of those nominations were actually on behalf of an entire team. So our committee decided, in addition to giving out these two awards, that we wanted to acknowledge this team for their work with some of our most vulnerable learners. So the Excellence in Special Education Award honorable mention goes to the Abington Early Education Program. And I'd like to just share a few excerpts of what some of the nominators actually said about this exceptional team, because they were just wonderful. She makes learning interactive and fun and always keeps parents informed of what's going on in the classroom. She has gone above and beyond. She will use a child's interest to connect and educate a student. I heard she was a preschool legend. Her dedication and patience has guided many little hands onto the next step with confidence. She does a wonderful job collaborating with other paraprofessionals, caregivers, and educators to provide comprehensive support. Thank you for welcoming my atypical child and treating him like a typical child while also meeting his needs. So on behalf of the CPAC, I want to lend congratulations to the Abington Early Education Program for their achievement and honorable mention of this award. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the CPAC. Dr. Robbins, thank you for helping spearhead that. I know, I know the parents, Vicky, thank you so much for chairing that committee, I know it's a lot goes into it. And to everybody who is nominated, congratulations, you all do incredible work, and thank you so much. I'm going a little out of order on you again, so we're gonna jump to the report of the superintendent of schools, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Schaefer.
So the purpose in jumping around here is so that the student who graduated at the top of our class, well, he doesn't have to go home and do homework, but he's probably got something productive that he needs to do as a graduating senior. And every year in Massachusetts, we give this award to the top student in the class. And so this year, and Sean is here with us, Sean Allman, congratulations on winning the MAS certificate of academic excellence for the Abington Cultural Schools.
So before you go, you mind taking the microphone and telling us what you're gonna do next year?
Yeah, sure.
I got you, you almost made it out of the car.
So next year, I plan on attending Boston University, and there I plan to study computer science with a minor in entrepreneurship, and hopefully there I'll continue this legacy I've made at Abington High. Hopefully I'll be productive, do well, and obviously fulfill my parents' dreams of success here in Massachusetts. Because one of the only reasons they actually moved here, and one of the only reasons I'm so lucky to be at a school such as Abington, is that my parents did everything they could to, everything they could for me, and I really appreciate that, so I wanna thank them. And next year, hopefully, I'll be Justin's amazing student, as I think I am now.
Sean, thank you, congratulations, and best of luck with everything in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we've got all the nice, happy, fun stuff. So I'm gonna jump, for hearing of visitors, anybody here would like to take to the podium and address the committee on anything? Okay, no? So we're just gonna move on to the approval of minutes from our April 23rd meeting. If the committee could just review them and make a motion to either approve or amend as needed, and get those out of the way.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. So our report of the director of curriculum instruction assessment, Dr. Boston, we're just handing it off, so we're gonna first have up the English Language Education update from Ms. Elizabeth Dupree?
Dupree.
Dupree, okay.
So hello, everyone, I'm Elizabeth Dupree. I'm the Director of English Learn Education in Abington, pre-K through 12, and I want to thank you for the opportunity for speaking tonight about our strengths and areas of growth. So first, I wanted to walk you through the demographics of Ls in Abington. As you can see from the chart on the screen, our L population continues to grow in Abington. We currently have 265 English learners, 68 former English learners. We have 408 students whose first language is not English. Seventy-five percent of our English learners speak Portuguese as their first language. The other 25% of our English learners speak languages such as, 15 other languages, such as Haitian Creole, Spanish, Vietnamese, Arabic, and Gujarati. And just to note, our Haitian Creole speaking population has been growing a lot this year. Also, another interesting piece of information is, out of our Ls, 25% of our English learners are in their first year in US schools. I also wanted to just highlight how Ls are doing on standardized testing compared to the state. So every year, our English learners take the WEATA access test in January, which tests their proficiency in English in listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and the goal is for students to be able to exit the program from when they start between five and seven years. So in Abington, Ls who attained proficiency was around 9% compared to the state, which is 11%. And then the percent of Ls making progress towards exiting within that timeframe is 42% compared to the state, which is 38%. For the MCAS in grades 3 through 8, Abington, the Ls are performing in alignment with how the state's doing. So for ELA in math, Abington is exceeding in meeting at the same percentage as the state, Ls are doing across the state. For ELA and for math, we're also aligned in the state averages with doing slightly better in ELA and slightly below the state average in math. Last year, I talked about our goals for this current school year. So just a reminder, our goals were decreasing the L dropout rates at Abington High School and closing the achievement gap for Ls across the district, allowing for more common planning time between ELE teachers and content area teachers, and writing curriculum that's better aligned with general education curriculum in grades K through 12. So some actions that we've taken this year is, our department has created and presented PD centered on best practices for teaching English learners to staff across the district. So this year, we presented at the September PD, the district half-day PD, as well as the January PD. Additionally, our elementary school teachers wrote curriculum the summer of 2023, and they wrote it in alignment with the REACH series, the National Geographics REACH series. And this year, our elementary L teachers are planning on continuing their work that they started last summer. So some of our department's strengths, we have strong ELE teachers. Our ELE teachers are passionate, culturally proficient, and follow an asset-based approach to language learning. Also, it's been a pleasure working with my department this year, creating meaningful PD for the teachers in our district to help our teachers better service and accommodate for the needs of our English learners. Another one of our strengths is family engagement, so we put a lot of work into trying to reach out to families and bring them into the schools. We currently have an active LPAC. We host different events such as ESL Family Breakfast, ESL Family Night, technology workshops, and for the third year in a row, we've had adult ESL classes, which have been funded by the Abington Cultural Council. So to highlight some of our strengths, I was going to show you an example of some PD that we presented to teachers this year in our district. So if you will indulge me in this exercise, I want you to imagine that you are a Greek language learner, and you are a newcomer in Athens, Greece, and you are going into your freshman year of high school. It's your first day, and you're walking into a Greek history class. Your teacher has the assignment written on the board, and you have two minutes to complete this very easy, simple question, and your answers must be written in Greek. So you with your partner can use whatever tools available to complete the assignment. And I will put my timer on for two minutes. Do you guys wanna go through the two minutes, or?
We could be here for two hours, and still get to the same spot.
For the sake of, for the sake of time, would it be easier if I gave you this to complete?
Yes.
So what are some differences that are in this slide that make it easier for you to access the content in this Greek history class?
Pictures and translation.
Yes, so there's pictures and translation. So for an English learner, I mean a Greek learner, who is literate in their native language and who has a strong academic background, they probably would be able to complete this assignment. They're definitely missing some background knowledge. This question, probably by most ninth grade students in Greece would be able to answer it without thinking, because learning about the Greek Revolution is equivalent to learning about the American Revolution in the United States. It's something that's been drilled since a very young age. For a student who's a Greek language learner, they might not have that background, but if, you know, they use the resources, they may be able to answer the question. Now take a minute and think, what if you are Haitian speaking and you are not literate in your native language? Would these accommodations be helpful to you? Probably not. So our teachers have English learners from many different backgrounds, and there's no one-size-fits-all accommodation. So what our department has been striving to do this year is work with our teachers and show them how to best accommodate for the different needs of our students. We, you know, have many students who come from backgrounds who, maybe they've had interrupted learning, they have big gaps in their education. We've had students who are in the secondary level who are not literate in their native language. So our goals have been helping teachers learn more tools to help make content accessible, and also to teach language simultaneously while teaching the content. So I'm gonna end the presentation on looking towards next year, some areas that we would like to continue working on and making improvements. So we would like to continue working on writing curriculum that's better aligned with general education curriculum for grades K through 12. Another area of focus is providing staff with more guidance on referring English learners to special education, especially at the early grade levels, where it can be hard to distinguish what is a language need versus a special education need. We also wanna work towards having more equity for grading of English learners in general education classes, specifically with our newcomers who are at the very beginning stages of learning English. And finally, we are hoping to identify funding sources for after-school tutoring and summer programming. These are programs that we've had in the past and would like to try to bring back. So that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
I have a comment to start, so I, we, I think, like I love the fact that we are able to provide the adult ESL classes. We see them here, sometimes around Tuesday nights when we're here as well, in the seminar room, and I just think that can probably go such a long way in helping those kids that are in those homes, if the parents are able to get, like if they're parents of students that we have, having them able to get some English learning here can bring it home and just continue to develop what the students are learning here with what their parents are now learning, and almost, almost work together at it, right? It can almost be an exercise they can work together when they're at home on, just learning. I can't imagine, like I mean, we put on, you put on the board, like, having to walk into that situation, it's gotta be difficult, and then when your mention of what's a language need and what's, could be special education, I don't even know how you would, yeah, like how to tell that, or like at a certain point, because it's just, it can be so difficult to figure out. I guess my only question would be, is obviously this, the graph of the English learners in Abington is not a nice diagonal straight line. It's continuing to skyrocket, and I guess, what do you see as maybe some of the challenges that may come if that trend continues? I mean, we see it in our budget, right? So we know that it's a priority as much as we can for it, I guess. I'm just looking at if those numbers continue, if that trend continues, I mean, even since COVID, I, like, looking really quick, it looks like it's over 100 people, over 100 students just since COVID came back, so.
So there's definitely many challenges. You know, we need more staff to help accommodate the needs of our students, and I think also just programming, I think having programs like after-school tutor, tutoring to help catch up some students, especially students who are really struggling academically, that would immensely benefit our students, and continuing to support general education teachers who feel the strain of, you know, having to do the hard job of making the content more accessible. We have, you know, so many teachers who are trying very hard and working very hard, but I think, you know, having more time to be able to plan and sit down and change their lessons to accommodate for the students.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just as someone who once upon a time took that leap and moved to a country that did not speak English and I had to learn, it's hard. It is so hard, and I wasn't great at it. And I learned a lot about myself. And one of the things I can see in the hard work of the families, the students, your department, and the teachers is the fact that I get to work with a lot of these kiddos some days. And to see them comfortable and to be willing risk takers, that means that they are surrounded by people who are making them feel comfortable enough to be risk takers. And that's how they can learn the most easily. So even though you're trying to do so much with so, so little resources compared to what you could probably use, thank you for what you're doing for these kids because it's, they are really, they're, they're trying so hard and they get so excited. And I, there's nothing cuter than when they're yelling at you in, like, two and three different languages, all in the same sentence. And a lot of times with the parents, too, they are risk takers as well. And there's nothing but admiration for them in all of that. But thank you for giving them a place, a jumping off point where our families feel empowered to learn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. Up next, we have Ms. Karen Daisy from the Wellness Department.
Hello, everybody. I want to first build off what Elizabeth just said and say that it's because of her professional development opportunities this year that we are like, holy macro, we have a lot to do. But now I have vocabulary words in multiple languages. I have a vocabulary link on my Canvas homepage. And thank you for helping all of us see the right thing to do. All right, Wellness Department. So the areas that we had proposed that were areas that needed improvement from last year was ideally, it would be great if we had more instructional time at the elementary school. That is, again, it would require staff. It would require space. It would require things that we do not have. We also said we wanted to work on our vertically aligning our health curriculum. And we kind of put a halt on that because we knew that over the summer, they talked about new frameworks coming out. And somebody said it would take at least a year before they got approved. And boom, by January. So we've kind of been just, like, waiting. We were attending conferences. We've got more staff going this summer, so we'll make it our priority next year. Last year, we had three substitutes in our Wellness Department, and I'm happy to say that we are fully staffed with full-time teachers. And that we committed to making at least one of our department PDs be physical education-related instead of everything just health, which that was part of our wellness policy that we had, excuse me, had that in writing. So this year, we were like, okay, let's actually, we need to do that. So as far as the strengths of our department, I think that we do consistently, constantly adjust our practice to meet the needs of the students. So what does that mean? It means in some cases, certain kids may be excused from a health class due to their, you know, parent's decision. And we'll provide alternate assignments for them. Also, just in this changing world we live in, when I started teaching in 1993, I never heard of vaping. So obviously, we add that into the curriculum. COVID was not a thing five, six years ago, so we add that in. It's sort of like, I mean, you can't be alive on this planet without listening to people talking about social media and phones and what they're doing to kids' mental health. And so we, we add that thing, we add that into our topics. So basically, it's just sort of staying as current as we possibly can. The, oh, I guess that kind of, I went into number two with that. We also have a suicide prevention program called SOS, which stands for Science of Suicide. And it is a program that all students in grade seven and all students in grade nine participate in. And we have, we updated the program of studies in 2018 under Kate Casey, and it's still effective. We have interest, high interest in our wellness electives, still offering another three Mind Body Spirit classes next semester. So it's great to see kids are interested in that. And we have also, between Abington Copes and between the Wellness Department and Wellness Committee and various groups have brought in some speakers to the school. So we have, we had some people come in from Minding Your Mind to talk about mental health. The Wellness Department participated in a PD from a group called DETECH Together, which is for the early detection of cancer. Not so much about preventing it, but about, like, showing how much greater the survival rate is if you were to detect cancer in stage one versus stage four. So all of the wellness staff were trained as Train the Trainer, so we could now teach that. That Abington Copes provided a vaping video for grade seven. And also, we did a safety pledge and banner signing with the seniors at the Credit for Life. We've also had badminton and basketball tournaments between the high school and the middle school to raise money for the American Heart Association. Again, we, I will always continue to say, we could benefit from more instructional time in grades K to four. We do need to continue to work on the curriculum now that we have new frameworks. We, I would like to see an increase enrollment in sophomore elective health classes. So when I started here, health was a freshman class. So I don't remember the exact timeline, but there came the class that, you can maybe help me with the name of it. The one Tom Kiderick taught, it was science, but also, I'm sorry, something about technology. And it became like a mandatory class for freshmen. So they bumped health up to sophomore year. And then several years back, it was decided, there's this hole in our K to twelve health in that there's nothing being offered for freshmen. So we put health back down to freshman year, and I do believe that it belongs there. We do have a sophomore health elective. And I'm trying to think about, like, why isn't it, you know, like, we haven't run it for the last two years. And a couple of things. I think that the Wellness Department, we could do a better job of promoting our own classes during the class for kids when it's time to sign up for new classes. And we also used to do, like, the directors would go around during homeroom and tell everybody what classes we offered. And again, I think some things just sort of fell by the wayside during COVID and didn't get picked back up again. But we can do a better job at increasing enrollment. And once again, new frameworks, new alignment. So for next year, we have forty students that enrolled in Life 101, thirty-five for child development, thirty-nine in CPR, sixty-two in Mind Body Spirit, and zero in the Current Issues in Health for our sophomores. So that is going to be an area for priority for next year. So for seeing how the Wellness Department helps align with the vision of the graduate, we have the self-aware individual and that students are given lots of information regarding mental health and how to manage stressful situations. And for the socially competent contributor, they use technology to enhance learning for themselves and for their others, or for others, I should say. Students are asked a lot if they don't know something, the answer to something, instead of me just giving it to them. Why don't you see if you can find the answer? And then when they find the answer, then we talk about, did that come from a valid and reliable source? Because it's important across the board, but it's super important in health that it's coming from somewhere valid. And the 2023 frameworks are going to focus on practices and skills over content. This has been tricky to wrap my head around a little bit. But these are the seven skills that the new frameworks lay out for where we should be focusing. And that content itself is not as important. And I agree, now that I've gone to the conference that I went to last week, that if kids know where to get information, know how to advocate for themselves, can understand that social media is not real and that you shouldn't have to look like the person on TikTok or whatever, that they'll be able to get the content on their own. Obviously, we're not ditching content, but we're going to make the shift to focus on skills over content. And, oh, I just put a couple of, so we were asked to either teach an interactive lesson like Elizabeth did or put photos of, like, just some of the things. So there's, there's a lot of things that we're doing. You can see up here, we have some child development kids each get a holiday that they have to do a craft that would be acceptable in a preschool. This was a Think Outside the Box for job interviews. I gave them just this black swiggley line. I don't know if you can even see that, if it's showing up there with the, right there, and they had to turn it into something. And the idea is, don't make it like a snake. Do something. And, you know, we talked about how job interviewers want to see that. The Credit for Life program is huge within, I mean, it wouldn't say it's a Wellness Department thing, but life. We had students who created a Mental Health Resources for Teens PowerPoint. And this is just on the bottom right, there's a student sample. So now they all have access to about a twenty-four-page PowerPoint, each page having three resources where they could go for podcasts, for books that they might want to read, for, you know, a variety of TED Talks, great things like that. I'd say one of the biggest interactive projects we have in our department is the Baby Project for Child Development. Above the babies, ooh, I don't know what I just did. Above the babies in the gym, you can see Mr. Cormos introduced a new unit this year where they were drumming. I think I went at five days out of five. I don't know if anybody else made it down to the gym and participated. And they were having a grand old time. So I just think it's great to continually, you know, find new things, keep the kids entertained.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Have you, have you ever actively polled, say, the freshmen to find out what they would be interested for sophomores to? Like, I know some of the other departments have put out, you know, what would you, what would you be interested in for, say, an elective? Have you done?
We have not.
Okay. And or, like, things like Mind Body Spirit? Is there possibly a way to do, I don't want to say a junior or like a lesser component of that, but almost like a sophomore level of something like that?
So the sophomore class that exists is called Current Issues in Health, and Kate Casey built it. And it basically operates under the components of, like, physical health, mental health, emotional health. And there's, like, each one of those gets a major project or an activity or something to do within that. But it doesn't have to be this set in stone, we're going to talk about this, hence the reason it's Current Issues in Health. So again, the whole idea that right now we see kids that are diagnosing themselves with mental illnesses because somebody on TikTok described their bipolar symptoms, and they're like, that's me, I have that. So that would certainly be something that you could talk about. I mean, personally, I think freshman health should carry over to sophomore year and be mandatory. But like Elizabeth said, that would take more staff, more space, more classrooms. But a year, a half a year is not enough to cover everything that we want to. But that's certainly something we could look into is talking to the kids and seeing what their interest would be.
Quick question, because I'm not familiar with the high school requirements. How many electives do you have to take while you're in high school of the health courses?
You don't have to take any. You have to take freshman health. It's not, I mean, I guess, level-wise, it's an elective, but it's mandatory class. All freshmen take it unless there's something, like, within their schedule that doesn't allow it. And then they have to take a health class or a wellness class by the time they graduate. The PE requirement, because it's all part of wellness now, is mandatory for freshmen, sophomores. And then it's mandatory for juniors and seniors unless they have, like, a full schedule. They don't have to. Is that correct? Okay. So after freshman health, they don't have to take another health class if they don't want to. But we do get pretty good numbers.
Okay. And these other classes, like the Life 101 and the Child Development, those are offered only for juniors and seniors?
Juniors and seniors. Life 101 is only seniors.
Okay.
And then CPR, Child Development, and Mind Body Spirit are juniors and seniors.
Okay.
That's why we're looking to sort of fill the sophomore gap now.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pam just stole my, Pam just stole one of my questions right there with that one, so I appreciate that. And you actually answered the other one, because I want to confirm that health was required in grade nine.
Yes.
The only one I have right is, so the new health framework that you talked about, is that going into effect in the fall? Does that go into effect as part of the curriculum in the fall or is it after that?
Sort of been like, it's here and it's there, and you guys should start doing it. But I believe we're making the, like, we're going to start the process over the summer, taking a look and kind of realigning our scope and sequence. And then, I'm being told, we'll get department time next year to work on.
The frameworks are here.
Yeah.
Those are the frameworks we have to follow.
Yeah.
We are working with other districts in the North River Collaborative to take a look at, what does this mean here on the South Shore? And how do we roll this out in an appropriate way that makes sense for students and our staff and educate the community as we would?
Okay.
But even with the slide that I had with the skills and practices,
Yeah.
it's not anything different. Our kids, now, they do decision-making, they do reading for information, they do all of that. It's just, we will teach nutrition, and then we'll talk about, like, why would you choose this food over this? And everything's confined to one topic. Whereas now, we're going to focus on the skill and introduce the topic. So really, they're not getting a different education or different subjects, or I'm not introducing some new whatever. It's the same, just presented a little bit differently.
Okay.
I just wanted to put a plug, if I could, for the Wellness Committee. Today, we were joined by someone who hadn't, hadn't been a part of the committee at all this year, and it's open. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Ms. Daisy, it's open to the public.
Yes.
So if someone wants to be on the distribution list, to be notified at the meetings, you can certainly reach out to Ms. Daisy, and she can add you. It's great to get, we had some new ideas today. It's wonderful to have the public outside of administration and school committee there. So if anyone is passionate about the topic, come join us.
Yes, please. It's four meetings a school year. It's not that.
And you do, I, as someone who's out there, some of the discussions are fascinating, especially with the students.
Well, I have to say, Melanie and I were here till five fifty.
You don't have to be.
Can sometimes get carried off onto a tangent.
Thank you, Ms. Daisy. Appreciate your time. Dr. Boss, I'm going to turn it over to you for the announcement of the Chester Millet Outstanding Teacher and Support Personnel Award recipients.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm not going to hassle you about not saying good evening back to me tonight.
Good evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This year, we had over fifty nominations coming from students, staff, and families in multiple language. And this year's Chet Millet Awards are truly representative of Abington's best. I'd like to thank the students, staff, and families who made those nominations this year. I'd also like to thank the members of the committee who volunteered their time to review each nomination in order to select this year's recipients. As was announced during Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, I'm excited to share again that this year's recipients of the Chester J. Millet Junior Outstanding Certified and Sports Staff Awards are Carla Brusson, an AMS sixth-grade teacher, and Sonia Nunez, a former EL tutor, currently a general education tutor at Abington High School. Please join me in congratulating Carla and Sonia on earning this recognition as outstanding members of our faculty and staff. And I'd also like to congratulate all of the staff members who were nominated for all the hard work that they do. It is recognized in the community. Both Sonia and Carla will be recognized at our back-to-school full staff meeting in August. So thank you. I don't think you have any questions for me.
No, thank you, Dr. Boss. I appreciate it. Congratulations to both winners and all the nominations, nominators as well. Principal Report, Mr. Born. Need you come back again.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back. I believe you have a copy of the language that I spoke about at the April meeting. That is the proposed language to replace what is in the existing language in the handbook. This is kind of a rewrite, as I mentioned to you, in April. But as far as it is lived, the school does not represent a substantial change in the way we do business as much as provide hopefully greater clarity into the why and what we do when we make our steps regarding student attendance. This does represent several hours worth of very thoughtful deliberation at the school council level. So I'd like to take this moment to thank my school council for rolling the sleeves up and trying to really understand what is a pretty complicated topic, albeit an important one that we clarify with our students, families, and community. So I see importance coming to school as a critical step to an education. So I didn't know if there are any questions or anything in particular folks wanted to follow up on.
So what the committee is looking at is a rewrite of policy that was previously approved by previous school committees. So you're not asked here to consider a new policy. This is language describing current policies.
A few additional updates of information that are available on DESI and things.
DESI's definition of.
Chronically absent.
Chronically absent. Chronically absent. At our last meeting, um, there were four elements for the handbook changes, if you remember, and three of them. You had uh the differences outlined for you, and this was the, this was the first one that was not outlined in such a detailed fashion. And what the committee decided to do was just vote those other three, and then the committee asked through the chair for. Um, a copy of what the rewrite was, and so that's what you see here.
Do we need to vote this? These changes, like anything?
I do not, no, because the policy hasn't changed, the dis- it's just a description of the policy, it's um, it's the same policy. It's a friendlier version, it's a, it's a, I think it provides better access to the policy. Or the policies that it describes in terms of people understanding what we're doing.
I mean, this is very like, it's very clear, like it's, everything about it is very clear, so I don't have any issues with that, I just didn't know if we had to. How about this, just in case we do.
I thought we.
Uh, uh, because otherwise I don't know why would have, why would we, why would, why would we have pushed it forward, like? Let's just take a vote in case.
It would actually be, it would be either helpful to not vote on it or vote favorably for it, if you voted against it, we'd have a problem.
I understand that.
You can do what you want, but we'd have, we'd have no attendance policy for our high school.
I mean, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Born about it, though, looking through it?
No, I mean, it's someone who sat in that room, I think the biggest things were, there were misconceptions or just. A lot of people didn't understand where the eighteen day, so clarifying that and the previous policy. It had language that was put in on top of previous language that almost seemed contradictory, if you read it in certain ways. With lots of charts and graphs and paragraphs that seemed to be a lot. And so I think the whole goal was to really clean it up, explain it, and make it way more user friendly for the families.
And that's probably exactly, sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
It's probably exactly what happened, there was a policy that was voted and then subsequent policies were voted and it just added in. You know, they evolved into this confusing couple of pages.
And I don't know if this was a confusion pop up, uh, because I can imagine questions, well, they're excused absences, blah blah, so like, I think. Clarifying that in bold multiple different times, I think it would alleviate, so I feel more comfortable just in case, if, I think we're all okay with it, if we. I'm looking for a motion to approve um the proposed language exactly as presented by Mr. Born.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
No one could worry about it, either way.
Thank you.
No problem. The twenty-four, twenty-five school improvement plan for Beaverbrook Elementary School, um, Ms. Julie Thompson. Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you, everyone, um, I just wanted to present our twenty-four, twenty-five school improvement um plan for Beaverbrook, we worked with our school council. To um clarify and come up with some uh goals for next year. Our goals for last year were to improve writing proficiency for all students, and we did that through some P D and um. Our students made great gains in writing just by teachers using standards and creating rubrics. That were consistent across, across grade levels, and there was some great growth there. Our second goal was, this was for um this current school year, to improve supports and outcomes for students' social and emotional needs. We increased our school adjustment counselor to uh one point O from a point five. We had um some classrooms that require some explicit teaching of social skills, if they're having some, a hard time on the playground. And teachers continue implementing second step in their classroom, a social emotional curriculum. And we have um a mental health team that meets bimonthly to discuss students that may be struggling with um. Behavior or have some struggles at home or families that may need some support. Our third goal for this year was to increase opportunities for families to engage in the school community, we invited families to meet all of our specialists at open house. In the cafeteria as opposed to going, searching them out throughout the building, we planned, we planned and we're implementing um next week. A welcome to kindergarten night for incoming families, um, to, well, parents really to come in and see what a day in the life of kindergarten is and. Ask any questions of us that they might have. We planned and hosted family math night, we also held a family literacy night. And Beaverbrook staff planned and hosted grade level opportunities for families, and we collaborated with the P T O on schoolwide activities. For this coming school year, twenty-four, twenty-five school improvement plan, our goals are to implement and utilize. Catered to reading and math nationally and locally normed assessments with all students as a universal screener. We have um, uh, we had a committee, Dr. Bossa had a committee to look at different assessments to use as a universal screener for. Our students and we're using i Ready next year to give us more data and information on what our students know and are able to do in reading and math. When through that we can have um implement data meetings so that we can learn uh what our students need and how to meet their needs. Our second goal for next year is to incorporate strategies to maintain positive student relationships within the school day. We've seen even years after COVID interrupted our school day, that students still have a difficult time. Managing relationships with each other and um managing disagreements on the playground and in the classroom, so. We are looking to explicitly teach problem solving skills to our students, uh, with our school adjustment counselors, school psychologists. To continue the second step, step program at least weekly in the classroom, institute a buddy bench at recess with explicit teaching around that. And continue to implement and teach facilitated games at recess, our school adjustment counselor and our nurse had it as a goal to go outside and teach games, so. Um, they would have twenty or thirty students around them, they'd teach them how to play these organized games at recess, and it was great success, and students would then. Go on their own and, and play those games after they learned from them. We also have a recess heroes program where students are recognized for being good citizens at recess, and they come and get an award in the office. And a spray of bubbles when they get that, and their name goes up on the wall in the cafeteria. Our third goal for next year is to increase community building opportunities within and beyond Beaverbrook. We would like to um enhance our classroom buddies program within K two. Currently, we have some kindergarten classes that might buddy up with a first grade class and do STEM activities together or um. Any type of activities together before vacation, things like that, um, also, we have some first grade um teams that, uh, classrooms that buddy up with second grade classrooms. To do those same activities and it's nice to have that, the older students show the younger students, um, you know, how to do those activities. And create those relationships, so, but we're also looking to partner with um other principals in the district to see if we can. Develop opportunities for middle, high school, Woodsdale students to come to B B S and um. Work with our students maybe on STEM activities because that's always a fun thing to do, um, and look at uh creating those relationships there. Even maybe come to Beaverbrook and do an excerpt from an upcoming concert that's coming, um, so that students at Beaver can see. What it is that happens at the middle high school or, or Woodsdale. And we're also looking to reinvigorate the Read Across America Community Readers Program that fell by the wayside during COVID. To have community members come in and school, um, school community members come into Beaverbrook and uh read two classes that day um on the schedule. Does anyone have any questions on our um twenty-three, twenty-four goals or our upcoming twenty-four, twenty-five goals?
I had two questions, um, the first one, I was wondering about um the. Family Math Night, Family Literacy Night, I'm just wondering, were they well attended and regardless of whether they were or not, I still think they're super important. Really important for the district to keep putting those out there.
Yes, they were very well attended, um, Family Math Night is kind of my baby, um, I love doing Family Math Night and we have um. Lots of paper and pencil type of games that you just need dice and um cards to play, so you don't need a whole, a, a lot of items to play them. And we just had um tables and tables of games and all of the supplies needed to play and families played together, and it, and that, they were both very well attended. We did the same for literacy night this year, we did, um, we put out all kinds of reading activities and games and things like that, um, it was, the cafeteria was very, very packed.
Awesome, that's great, and then my other question, um, you had talked about increasing the school adjustment counselor to a full-time position. And I'm just wondering overall. I don't know quite how to word this question, but are you seeing any improvements? For me personally, behavior has been probably my biggest concern for the past four to five years, um. It hasn't been great, high school included, so just across the board, doesn't matter what the district is, if I had to pick one thing. It would be behavior, the downward trend, um, and I'm just wondering overall, um, for this year. Are your concerns or the issues that you're seeing, if you had to compare this year to the last year or two, would you say it's status quo, is it better, worse?
I feel like it's a, a little better this year than last year, particularly with our second graders who are, you know, the oldest in the school and um. They have more coping strategies, but it's been really great to have a full-time um school adjustment counselor on board because. The need is so high and she can um see students regularly or she can see, see students just to mitigate an issue at that time, and. Um, that's been really helpful in helping to resolve those peer-to-peer um problems, but I've, I have seen, we have seen um. Specifically at recess, a lot less issues this year.
Okay, thank you.
So the i Ready, the um, is, the, the idea of the assessment, is that new for Beaverbrook?
I Re- i Ready is new for the district, yes, um.
Is it replacing anything, I guess, though, or is there something already in place that's like a, a s- assessment like that right now?
Well, we had, would you like to speak, thank you. We had the Dibbles, we had the Dibbles assessment, um, but really that, those are just small subtests. Uh, or reading fluency, nonsense word fluency, those little pieces to reading, i Ready will give you a more comprehensive picture of um down to vocabulary, uh, reading comprehension. And also those um small foundational skills in reading, but it also will um calibrate as you're taking it, if you. If a student starts getting more and more questions wrong, it will calibrate down and ask questions to ascertain the level of the student that's, that's answering um the questions at the time. So you get a picture of where that student is and what their strengths are and what they may need some intervention with, and that's both for reading and math.
Okay, thank you, and the other one I had was, was about the opportunities for other schools' students to come back and. I don't know, like you mentioned the, like, community coming in for Read Across America, maybe there's an opportunity for some of the older kids to come back and read to them, I'm just.
Yep.
I know, um, so I know like the fourth grade, some fourth graders are middle school today, right, for their, and they enjoy coming here, but I think. The fifth graders enjoy getting to show the fourth grader some, so even the idea of the third graders coming back maybe in this time of year to sh- to talk to the second graders. About it, they get to go back, you get to see your teacher, um, one other thing, I know Woodsdale students, I think, get to come here for the middle school drama production. So I know that's tricky because I know the Woodsdale drama production is kind of, it's outside source, it's an outside director, so. But maybe going forward, it's a way to work with them where the second grade, even if it's just the second graders, get a chance to go and see the performance at Woodsdale, something to that effect, so. Or they even get to come here.
Yeah.
And see it one of the days too, so I just, I know the Woodsdale drama production is handled by outside, um, like outside staffing for the most part, but just, I was thinking of some ideas as you were mentioning.
Sure.
I love that idea, I remember being a kid and wanting to go back and see some of the old teachers, and it can always be tough, so just trying to think of different ways to do it.
Sure, that's, that's a great idea, we absolutely think about that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson, have a good night.
You too.
Next, the school improvement plan for the Abington Early Education Program, Ms. Annie Robinson.
You got an honorable mention at the beginning of the meeting, so that, just don't blow it.
I'm already gonna be going off script, um, I did, I actually just want to start by thanking the um, the CPAC for that, it's a great honor, and uh, I know our staff is very appreciative of it. And I can say they're also very deserving of it, um, so thank you for that, very, very much appreciated. So I am gonna try and stick to my script today because I can tend to talk a bit, um. And tonight I'm here to present our school improvement plan for this coming school year and also to review um the progress that we made on our goals for our school improvement plan that we were working on this year. I want to start by thanking our school council members, um, our um parent representatives were Mr. John Brace, Ms. Ashley Mederos, and Ms. Jessica Murphy. And we also had two staff representatives, Susan Keaty, who's our speech therapist in our building, and um Ms. Casey Griggs, who is a special education teacher in our substantially separate program. Our school committee liaison um this year was um Ms. Julie Groom. Um, so I'm gonna start by just reviewing the goals that we set from um for the school for this year. Our first goal was to investigate and pilot thematic units of study, um, utilizing developmentally appropriate evidence-based curriculum materials and activities. Integrating um technology into daily instruction across our classrooms. So we've made a lot of progress on this goal, um, it's been something that we've been, we've put a lot of energy and, and work into. So just to identify some of the things that we've done, we have um identified thematic units um to carry us across the school year. So each unit um runs, can run anywhere from five to six weeks, um, and within that, um, within those units, there are weekly themes. For example, the first unit of the school year, the overarching theme is school community, the weekly units are welcome to school, all about me, related to families. Friendship and emotions, um, and then we have um themes that have carried us through, that will carry us through the um, through the school year. We've done this in a way that also still allows for um sort of those special event weeks, um, where we aren't doing directed thematic work, but we are. Leaving an opportunity for the whole school to be working on um items around, for instance, fire safety, so when we do fire safety week, that'll be sort of a special event week. So with regard to those units, so far we have created five, the teachers have worked to create five um of those curricular units. We're using a common template to create that, um, that curriculum, so really looking for those, what the big ideas are, what our guiding questions are related to our themes. Identifying common vocabulary, um, along with center-based learning experiences, and these are really things that we want to have that are happening consistently across each classroom. So we don't in any way want to um thwart individual teachers creativity and their ability to bring their own lens and um. And preferences to their, to what they're teaching in their rooms, but we want to make sure that every student's experiencing the same um overall content. And then additionally, uh, related to those um units, we have identified um a read aloud text that are linked to each weekly unit. We have worked to implement common curriculum um across our classrooms, so we've continued this year with the Learning Without Tears curriculum and the Second Step Social Emotional Curriculum. This year we were able to add um the Haggerty Phonological Awareness Curriculum, um, which has been implemented across all our classrooms. We've identified a um multi-sensory reading program to support the development of phonemic awareness that we'll be implementing next year, the Lively Letters Program. Um, that supports um development of phonemic awareness and early reading skills. And all of these commercial curriculums that we're using are aligned to what students will be using when they head over to Beaverbrook, so there'll be nice continuity of um, of the curriculum. With the help of Vicki Graham, I guess Vicki left, um, Vicki helped us create learning centers or listening centers, rather, for each of our classrooms, um, so this was something that came up as um. Something that the teachers had talked about wanting to have, the old, sort of the old days of the, the tape players with the headsets are sort of outdated, so we were trying to brainstorm ways that we. the tape players with the headsets are sort of outdated, so we were trying to brainstorm ways that we could do that so students could have those experiences. If they wanted to go to sit and listen to a story, listen to a sto- bring a friend over and listen to a story together. Um, and Vicki Graham, I, I asked her, I feel like I asked her on a Thursday, and by Tuesday, we had them in our Kindle setup and ready to go in each of our classrooms with um, books and the scanning codes and the headsets and everything ready to go. So, that's been a really wonderful addition. Um, what else did we do related to that? We um, have implemented, implemented a wide range of communication support. So this is really for all our students, not just for our students that um, are receiving special education services for communication, um, but um, resources such as visuals, so low-tech resources all the way up to more high-tech using technology, using our smart boards, and, and really integrating that as part of our um, part of our learning uh, media. And then, one of the fun things that we did related to our um, curriculum this year was we participated in a program through um, Worcester Polytech, um, created the, um, they have developed a program called IMSTEM, and it introduces um, uh, the problem, this year it was the Problem Solving Process, and it uses early literacy, and there's um, identified books that you can use. Um, and it, it works, it has students work through the problem-solving process, much as a high schooler would be working through a problem-solving process in a high school-level class. Um, but uses obviously um, early education appropriate materials. Um, our second goal uh, that we worked on this year was to maximize the opportunities um, that we have as being part of this co-located um, um, building with the middle school and the high school. We continued our student intern program um, with the high school students. It was a very vibrant program. Um, the students are all um, really wonderful and, and consistently attending. They, many of the students wanted to um, continue and, and actually work with us over the summer, um, in our summer program, so that's been a wonderful, um, a wonderful program. Um, and this year we're able to add the Middle School Peer Leaders Program. So the eighth grade, some of the eighth grade students that are peer leaders in the middle school, we've worked to create a program where they are able to come join us. They come every other week. Um, and they come and work in our classrooms typically to read stories or do sort of more small group um, work with students. Um, and then along with that, um, the Anti-Bullying Club um, actually reached out to me to um, inquire about coming to do some reading and some of that sort of initial work with our students, so we made that happen. Um, so that's been a really, a really nice thing. And then just last week, one of our fifth grade classrooms here in the middle school invited one of our classrooms to come up. They secured space in the library and the students came up and listened to um, the students reading them stories. Um, one of the big things we did this year was to develop a family engagement survey, so we really wanted to get a sense of, we thought we knew what we were, you know, what parents want and what families want, but we wanted to make sure that we were really kind of hitting on those things and making sure that we were addressing what parents' um, concerns are. Um, so we had, uh, we created a survey, we disseminated that and um, had a, a great, what we think was a great return rate of about forty percent um, participation. Um, and we've really used that information to help inform um, the development of our new school improvement plan for this year. Um, additionally, we hosted family days. We cre- we had a Family Literacy Day, which was an interactive event where families came in and participated in the classroom with their students, going through a um, using a, a book, going through a lesson with a teacher and um, uh, leading a lesson. Um, and then uh, moving on to a make and take activity that was related to the um, to the um, story. This was a great way for us, not only for our families to come in and be a part of our program, um, but also for our, um, for our faculty and staff to be modeling um, it, all kinds of different strategies that we use with our students. How do we read a story? How do we make a story come alive for our students? How do we um, ask questions that are going to help with that, those early comprehension, those early skills that we want to develop? And that was very well, all of our family events were very well attended. Um, we did a pumpkin patch event and um, as well as a family holiday fun day. Um, with regard to our parent-teacher conferences, we added an evening session last year um, to provide an opportunity for families that were unable to come during the day, and that was um, was a one-hundred percent hit. Um, all of our, all of our um, evening session slots were filled up. And we also um, continued to offer the um, conferences through both, through an in-person or a virtual um, option, just to make sure that we're really giving our families every opportunity to be um, engaged. We didn't want to put any barrier in that. Um, and then we just, we increased the frequency of our um, our preschool press, so the newsletter that I basically send out, we, I've gotten that out pretty much every other week um, this year. And we've also increased our use of our Facebook page. Um, and really we're just, there's probably hundreds of pictures that get posted to that on a, at least twice a week. Um, so families have a good way of kind of getting a sense of what their students are doing um, when they're in school, what their children are doing. Um, our third goal is to explore opportunities for early um, education accreditation, and we've um, we've definitely moved, moved forward with that. We reviewed the building-based assessment. We identified what our next steps are. We really saw that um, we were kind of at um, a, a meeting point with this as we're working on our curriculum. So we've sort of put the brakes on a little bit on that to focus on developing our curriculum because that's a really essential component of the accreditation process. Um, so we'll be continuing with our self-assessment um, work moving forward um, and aligning that with our curriculum. And then our fourth goal was to monitor and prove the safety of the physical environment and processes, such as drop-off and pickup and parking. Um, we, I, I think we've been very consistent in our communication with families about what our parking protocol um, is and, and what we need it to be, and, and so that we're able to keep our students safe. Um, that's blasted out to our families at least twice a month. Um, and we've had some good, um, some good result with that. We implemented new arrival and dismissal routines. The um, facilities department helped us out by painting some um, lines along our um, student entrance so that families now, when they're dropping off their student, they're lining up based on their student's classroom and their students are able to be received in a much more orderly, um, in a much more orderly manner. Um, and then upon dismissal, um, we have the families line up in those lines. And then we've added a sign-out procedure, so children are literally being handed off to their parents, so there's an, an uh, actual connection between the teacher and the parent, or the whoever's picking the caregiver, whoever's picking the child up. Um, that, that approved caregiver needs to initial that they're picking up the child up, and then that, the clipboard's handed back to the teacher, so it's not sort of like, here's the clipboard and we kind of pass it down the line. It's really a um, a face-to-face handoff between the um, between the teacher and the parent. Um, and then just again, related to the parking lot, we identified some strategies for um, trying to continue to help with that, making that clear. We put some cones out to sort of block off areas that we don't want people parking, um, that um, I guess I wasn't clear enough in my communication with. Um, and then we've also increased the presence of our SROs at arrival and dismissal times, so they are coming intermittently, so it's not like they're kind of there and then they're gone. They're kind of popping in and out, so um, families never really know when they're gonna be there, so we hope that that's gonna help with um, compliance with our um, safety procedures. Um, so for our twenty-four, twenty-five goals, um, we are going to, um, our first goal is really a continuation of our goal around curriculum. Um, we want to um, really coordinate with our technology specialists to further expand our use of available technology across classrooms now um, and provide staff with training to support competency and comfort with technology um, as an instructional tool. So now we feel like we kind of have our bones and we're ready to go, and now we're ready to start adding in some of those um, um, more instructional tools. Uh, our second goal is to review and refine communication practices for consistent home-to-school communication across our classrooms. Um, so what we really want to do with this is identify a uniform, um, identify a uniform communication um, practices across our classrooms so that our families are all getting at least the same amount of information. Um, we want to provide um, a consistent mechanism for family feedback, um, so that families are able to share um, at any, at any time what their feedback is, um, related to anything AEP. And we want to make sure, and this is really an important one, we want to make sure that we're translating all of our communication that's shared into um, a family's um, language, to make sure that we're really um, honoring that. Our third goal is to continue to strengthen the AEP community by maximizing opportunities for active family engagement and involvement throughout the school year. Um, and a big part of that is going to be um, increasing our family outreach and our volunteer opportunities for families. Um, we really want to make sure that the preschool um, is a place that families feel like it's their community. There, these are little children that are coming to join us, and, and I think if we think back to when our children were three years old, you, you remember how little they are. Um, and we want to make sure that this is a, a very welcoming and um, um, open community that our families feel that they're a very important part of. Um, we want to, this year we had three events. Next year we want to move to having at least um, four, so we want to have quarterly family um, wide events um, programmatically. And then, one of the things that we really would like to do is really invite our families to share um, any cultural traditions or holidays that they have, um, that they'd like to come in and share with our, um, with the program. And then the final thing on that was that we want to survey families, um, and not to be survey crazy, but we do want to get a sense of from our families, what areas they might like to have some more education in. What are things that are related to early childhood development, or related to the school process, or related to um, anything about entering into the school, um, entering into the school system and being a member of our community that they, um, that would be um, helpful for them engaging and supporting their children at home. And then our final goal, um, and I think this will always be one of our goals, is that we're, um, we will always continue to look to monitor and improve the safety of our physical space. Um, this year, one of the things that we're really gonna focus on is identifying a safe area for some part, um, for some safe hardtop play for our students. We have a wonderful playground, but it has that um, sort of rubberized surface, so um, there are some limitations to that. Um, and then expanding the use of the um, facilities here at two oh one, um, to better support um, students' gross motor development. So we're already involved in using the gym, but we want to really expand that, um, and think about other opportunities um, where we could expand. And that's what our, that, those are our proposed goals for the coming school year. Any questions from anyone that I can, anything I can clarify?
I have one. Um, so I know in the, and I don't know how far back I'm going with this, but there was always so, in terms of special education um, needed, like, need students, I know our numbers were always high there. We've done a great job. It was evidenced tonight by the CPAC Awards, but I know that there had been a time where it was difficult to get, um, I'm gonna mess up the wording, typical, um, yeah, peers in there. Does that still a, is that still a tough thing to do, or is it getting better and better and easier, easier for you?
So, um, I'm not gonna say that it's easier, cause I'm, I'm gonna give my staff some credit and say that it's a, it's on the basis of the program, but our program is now full and we're on a waitlist. We've been on a waitlist since March for next year.
That's great.
For our community peers, um, which is really phenomenal. Um, I, I, I would just wish that we could, we could support every, every family that comes um, to ask to be um, to be involved in our program, but, so our community peers are full. Um, and then just based on the age of our students, our special education students, it's sort of a rolling um, process as children turn three and they have special education needs throughout the year. They will join us or families move in that have students with special education needs. Um, so that's kind of, we always start light with our special education students, but we're usually pretty full by the end of the school year. Um, and then, um, I was just gonna say something else around that. Slipped my mind.
That's right.
Yeah, so, yep, so our peers were, were in great shape.
Any other thing I had in, this may, maybe part of it, I may just be missing is I'm reading through, it's just more of it, I, an idea, like with the, for goal four, so the safety of the environment, I don't, I'm thinking, what, like, generally speaking, you have three, four, maybe a couple, five-year-olds, depending on when their birthdays fall. I, like, using the space that we do have just to teach safety of crossing the street and getting them out there and doing things like that, so.
Yep.
Um, I mean, I'm not trying to get anybody, like, we want everybody to follow everything, but I know just making sure you're looking both ways and just things like that, utilizing that as you can. And I do think, I remember my daughter went here, and it's definitely with, with the, the light, when I come for high, uh, middle school pickup, I see them all lined up, uh, by the teachers waiting to be picked up, and it's much more organized than it used to be, so.
Yeah, it definitely feels, it, it definitely feels better, so that's a good thing. Um, yeah, and I think that's a great idea. I mean, we do, it's, and we do our um, our bus ride for our students. Um, we just did that last week for the students that are heading to kindergarten. Um, but I think that's a wonderful idea. I mean, we have the crosswalk there. It's a great, it'd be a great, a great idea.
I have one question, just um, the surveys. I love the fact that you do them, um, only because two-way communication is how we build partnerships, but the, the survey that you're saying that you sent out, was there anything like glaringly obvious? I'm just fascinated to know what some of the feedback was.
Yeah, so um, the questions that we had asked on the, on our survey, and I'll just kind of give you the Cliff Notes version of it. Um, I probably just really dated myself with that.
We got it.
Not me, though, not for anybody here.
So, some of the questions we asked were, do our families feel informed? Do they feel informed, just in a general way? Do they feel like they know what's going on at AEP? Um, are they aware of the curriculum that's in place for their students? Um, and then we moved into kind of the volunteering, what, what were there, are there things that they would like to be involved with? Um, are there, uh, we um, asked about different opportunities, so maybe a family might want to be involved and volunteer, but they can't do it during the day, and maybe there's things that they can do at home. Um, we asked about, um, again, about the traditions and the um, cultures, if there's things that people want to share, if they have any hobbies or um, uh, great skills. Um, we did have a couple of um, parents reply that they were, one was a hockey coach, so we're trying to figure out how to make that one, tie that one in. Um, and then we, again, asked a question around safety. Um, one of the things that we found was that parents said they felt informed for the most part. Um, the majority of, there, the majority of respondents said, yes, they felt very informed. Um, but then when we asked about more um, specific questions, that's where we kind of teased out, so like the curriculum area. It seemed like, hmm, I have a general idea of what you're doing, but I don't really know what it is. Um, so just even, just in response to that right away, we, I added just a little section to our, our newsletter just to start introducing and making sure that families knew what our curriculum is. Um, it, it sounds, it, it, it sounds somewhat silly in early education to be talking about rigor, but we really are looking at the rigor of the program that we have for our students to make sure that what we're having them engaged in is really learning experiences that are gonna help them when they hit kindergarten and then as they move forward. Um, so we want parents to know about that. We want parents to know what the curriculum is. Um, did that answer your question?
It does, okay.
I did have a couple of questions. First, um, kudos on the problem solving and introducing that into the curriculum. It sounds like that's what Beaverbrook is in need of right now, so it's great to hear that at least the students who are coming up from our program will have those skills. I wonder if there's an opportunity to learn what um, the Adjustment Counselor, I think it was the Adjustment Counselor who's running those little, like, playground games. I wonder what types of games she's teaching. I assume it's a she. Um, and if there's a way that you can kind of leverage some of that expertise to enrich what you're providing. Um, and then question for you, how many ELs do you have? Is like the general twelve percent of the district is EL or ML? Um, do you see that at?
Yeah, I would say we're, I, I don't have the exact percentage and I should, but I don't. I would say we're, we're probably around fifteen percent.
Okay.
Um, it's a pretty significant number.
And do you have the resources? I, forgive me, I forget if you have like tutors.
In preschool right now, the only, um, although this has just changed for the coming school year, but the guidelines are only that the students are screened. There's no um, there's no implementation of any curriculum, there's no um, anything that's dedicated EL support.
Hmm.
Um, although, um, Elizabeth Dupree has been wonderful, and she's, she's a wonderful support to us and um, frequently gets um, emails from me asking questions. Um, so, um, moving forward, I know the guidelines have changed a bit. Um, and we'll just have to, I'm gonna have to sit down with Elizabeth and kind of really tease out what does that mean for us and what does that look like at AEP.
That your students are still enjoying and are able to participate, despite the fact that English might not be their native language.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We have, in fact, the, um, one of the things we added, we had been using um, iPads and just Google Translate for translation, and it was kind of hit or miss, not great. Um, and then we have now these um, pocket translators, which we were, um, we have one in the building right now, which is this great little device where literally the teacher can talk into it, and it, it's a real-time translation to the student. The student can talk into it, and it's a real-time translation back to the, um, to the adult. Um, and the thing that's neat about it is they're, they're quite small, um, so they're, it, it's not anything that the student's like, oh, like, you're putting this iPad in front of my face, I don't want to talk anymore. It's really like, they can kind of hold it under their chin and capture what they're saying.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, um, I have a couple of questions for you. Um, I know in the past- Um, I know in the past, there was a problem, like, safety-wise with the school vans not using their lights. Is that still a problem or?
So when they're dropping the students off?
When they're dropping or picking up?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is an ongoing conversation that we have. Um, it often depends on the driver. Sometimes there's a shift in drivers that are dropping the students off. Um, but I'm in pretty close communication with, um, with the head of the transportation company that we use. Um, and she's, she's very responsive to it. So it's just, it, it's sort of like falls to my parking lot, um, protocol, shouting from the rooftops, um, just kind of keep revisiting it, um, to make sure that's something that's happening consistently.
Gotcha. Oh, and then my, uh, second question, um, are you still invited to Beaverbrook to, um, do some of the activities over there? Like they used, uh, kids used to ride the bus over to see like the Toe Jam Band and like a couple other activities. So I wasn't sure based on, um, students and, I guess, if, if it's still feasible to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something that, um, Ms. Thompson and I all should talk about, um, since I've been here and I'm finishing my third year now. Um, that's not something that we've done. Um, it's certainly something that we would love to do. Um, I just don't know that, if that capacity and if it's like logistically, if it makes sense, but certainly something we would investigate.
Yeah, I think it stopped after COVID, but it was one of those things. I know the kids loved to go over and.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's a nice way to get some of those experiences for our students.
Yes.
A different playground.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Um, so, next school committee meeting date, six days after school ends, uh, Tuesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM. Um, I just want the committee to know, it's unusual, so I just want, so the school improvement plan for the middle school is included in here. More as like an FYI, because it's kind of a quick turnaround to the next one and they'll be presenting at that June meeting. So we have it ahead of time. If you have any questions on it, we'll get it again as part of the regular agenda, but that's why it was included in here where it normally isn't. Um, just some dates to remember, AKA Daniel Grafton's planner for the week. Um, when, not, not including any lacrosse games that get announced tomorrow either. So, um, Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, tomorrow, senior athletic, I think it's Athletic Awards Night, right? Is it not just seniors? Is it senior athletic?
Juniors, undergrads.
So Athletic Awards Night in the cafeteria starting at six thirty. Thursday, um, May thirtieth, the Senior Awards Night in the auditorium starting at seven PM. Friday morning, senior stroll, that will be the, uh, for those that don't know, it's the high school seniors in their cap and gown, going from school to school, going through the hallways. Um, and then later on, after they're done with that, they have their senior picnic at Riley Field at eleven AM. Saturday, uh, is graduation on the front lawn at ten AM. Um, so hopefully everything holds off there. Wednesday, June twelfth is the last day of school for the rest of the students that aren't seniors. It's a half-day for everybody. Uh, Tuesday, June eighteenth, as I mentioned, is our school commuting at seven PM. Uh, one thing not on here that I wanted to mention for those here, but hopefully for those, um, looking too as well. As most of you know, uh, Mr. Schaefer's retiring at the end of June. Next Tuesday, June fourth, there's a retirement open house from three to six PM in the middle school cafeteria. Um, everybody is invited. It's open, open invite. If you have an RSCP, don't worry about it. Um, please, if you want to come by, uh, thank you, Mr. Schaefer, for his time here. Everybody is welcome. Um, Dr. Michelle, five PM? Around five PM, there'll be some formal comments that'll be given by, uh, about four people. Um, so that's kind of what I had. If anybody, if there's nothing else, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.